All right.
Okay, Mr. Davis, we're ready.
Okay, thank you very much. A good afternoon. This is a meeting of the City of Mobile City Council Finance Committee. We're here today to consider a proposed ordinance to amend the Mobile City Code by including the real property business privilege tax applicable to lessors of residential buildings and dwellings to the schedule of licenses. We have with us the members of the, I'm chairman of the committee. We have Mr. Williams, John Williams, and Fred Richardson, who are also members of the committee. I see we have Mr. CJ Small, Representative Second District, Ms. Gregory, Gina Gregory, representing the Seventh District, Bess Rich, representing the Sixth District. We have our clerk and members of her staff on board. We have Mr. Jamie Roberts and Ms. Florence Kessler is, Ms. Kessler is from Legal Department. Mr. Roberts is in the administration and is the member of the administration who has responsibility for moving this forward. So, we have, I don't see Mr. Arl, oh, there's Mr. Arledge. He's at the end of the table. We have our city council attorney with us also. So, we'll go ahead and get started. And what we're going to do today is, I know we have some members of the public who want to offer commentary on the proposed ordinance. And we're going to give them an opportunity to speak each for three minutes. I'd ask you to give your name and address, and the clerk will advise us when your three minutes is up. And since I see Mr. Reynolds, I'm going to go ahead and call on Mr. Reynolds to begin with.
Perfect. Thank you. Ben Reynolds, 3908 St. Andrews Loop in Mobile. I appreciate y'all extending this back to committee for us to discuss these concerns that have been raised or found with three minutes. First of all, I don't, it's not clear what the, what this, this ordinance sort of solves, the problem it solves. It does, it's not clear that the, the problem put forward, which is to address, you know, slumlord properties, that sort of thing, to address code violations, all that, that this, this really has any effect whatsoever in that regard. I really have questions for the, you know, the administration, and that would be what, what, what current enforcement mechanisms in place? If somebody is not buying a business license today, you know, what, what's the enforcement mechanism there? You know, what do we, what do we do there? And, and also, does this ordinance improve that at all? It, it doesn't seem clear, or it doesn't seem like it does from where I sit. So, like some clarification there. And then also, you know, how, how many of these sort of situations is this going to resolve? You know, are there a bunch of these pending out there, you know, that y'all are trying to get enforced? And, you know, is this going to fix those? It, it's not clear to me that it will. And then, you know, the, the biggest issue, I think, is that this ordinance will no doubt require that every single rental property will have to have a business license. And in Section 3446, I don't think it's as clear as been put forward that that is required today. Because if it were required, also, you would, you would be required to post a license in every location. And, and, you know, there are some other implications that go along with a business license at each location. And I'm not sure that that's what we want to, to see happen as a city. But, but if that's what the people desire, then, you know, we should be able to make that decision with clear eyes, you know, that, that's what this does. The exemption, again, the exemption affidavit for the ten or less requires a, a posting of the owner's information, the address of the property. And if, if that is, you know, being followed today, then it, you know, we should have all the information. We need to take enforcement action. Also, the structure, the sort of structure of this ordinance, you know, it's not clear, you know. It, it's enacted immediately, you know, and immediate upon inaction, everybody who owns a single family dwelling unit in the City of Mobile is out of compliance. I mean, shouldn't we, we should probably consider that as well. And, you know, like, just simple stuff like the definitions in this, you know, the dwelling unit definition, probably should match that of the zoning dwelling unit definition. There, there's two different definitions of dwelling unit, units. And then, like, the exemption section should be in exemptions. You know, there, there's quite a few other things that, that we could get into, I guess. You know, the City of Chickasaw did something similar to this. Is that all? Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. Mr. Richardson.
Currently, our, our law states that if you, to be in business, you have to have a license. That's what the law states. And let me just say that if a person took a cooler and packed it full of sodas and went and found a corner down on Dolphin Street and start selling sodas out of the cooler, he could be arrested and they would confiscate his cooler and his sodas for transacting business. You have to get a peddler's license to do that. You can't sell nothing without a license. Now, he could go down there and give them away all day. They wouldn't touch it. But once he start collecting money from somebody, he is in business. The thought that someone could rent a house, collect the money, and not be in business, that's not, that, that, if, 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 if citizens have gotten away for the last hundred years, it's, I, I say kudos. That day has come and gone. You, either you, you, if you don't want to, if you don't want a license, then, then let them leave there for free. Don't collect no money from them, and you are not in nobody's trouble. You cannot, today, rent property and not have a license. That's all, that's all we, that's all this is saying. When we, when we get through saying this, that, and the other, it, it's going to come down to, you're going to need a license to transact business. You're going to need the license to rent property. You're going to need a license for it. That's what it's coming down to. When we get through talking, that's where, that's where we are.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Richardson. We'll go on and take some more public comment. I, Madam Clark, is Mr. Erby here today to make public comment?
He is. He's on.
Okay, Mr. Erby, if you could give us your name and address, you'll have three minutes.
Sure. It's Jared Erby, 1 St. Louis Street in Mobile. I appreciate you giving me a couple of minutes to chat with you today. I, I don't know why my video is not working, but it is, is what it is. But I just wanted to kind of address, address the council first on the ordinance that's, that's kind of present now. You know, my opposition, obviously, I'm an entrepreneur and a, and a business guy. So, I think I'm generally, you know, kind of opposed to kind of creating extra layers of unnecessary paperwork. But, you know, so, so my concern isn't even so much with any kind of money that's being required, or taxes, or anything like that, especially if it was going to a good cause like, you know, cleaning up the city, which I think is an admirable omission that we're actually, you know, really in support of. But, you know, we, we, from a taxation standpoint, the property taxes now already cover, you know, we're not able to get a homestead exemption on our, on our rental properties inside the city, you know, so we pay a much higher rate already. So, from a taxation standpoint, I think we're already collecting revenue there. But, you know, it really just makes business more complex. I own over a hundred rental houses inside the city limits right now. And we're also a property management company. And then we also sell, you know, hundreds of properties to local investors in the area, many of whom, you know, own more than ten, plenty own less than ten. And this is the first time that I've ever heard of a law requiring a business license to have these rental properties. And, you know, I'm just laying it out there because, obviously, as far as the interpretation of the council and this committee, you know, I'm not in compliance of that law, you know, as it is, because I didn't even know it existed. You know, and, and I've owned property for well over a decade inside the city limits for rental, and truly completely unaware that it even existed. So, and I'm not even sure if I went and applied for a business license, that the business licensing folks would even know what I'm talking about to be able to get done. And then also, you know, in selling these hundreds of properties to investors, I'm not sure any of them know that it even exists right now. So, I think kind of creating this, like, burdensome, you know, complex law, you know, that really doesn't actually accomplish anything, you know, doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me. I do think that there's tools that we can do to fix some of the blight problems and things like that. And I would love to, you know, be a part of that and participate in that, because I think overall it has, you know, value to the community and also even to my properties. But I, I really feel like the tools are already in place. We see very little code enforcement already on properties that are out there, because we, we buy a lot of dilapidated properties. We advertise to vacant properties for, you know, people that live out of town and, you know, inherited a house that's kind of in, in rough shape. And, you know, most of these don't have code violations when they should. And, and I, I really think that the people that are really out of compliance with this issue are not going to go register for a business license anyways, because they, first of all, they just don't know it exists. And second of all, it's just kind of a burdensome paperwork. You know, I just don't think that the people that are, you know, that you're trying to target to actually clean up their properties are going to comply with this in any way. It's really going to create just kind of the Chickasaw situation where investors really don't want to go there.
Mr. Erby, your time is up.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clark, do we have anybody else signed up or that wants to speak?
No, those are the only two that I have. Those are the only two that I have.
You didn't, Mr. Aneos did not sign up?
Who's that?
Mr. Aneos, Celso Aneos.
Oh, um, no, he did not.
He joined a little late here. Longtime acquaintance, and, and I think he's probably got fifty or sixty properties. I'd like to hear from him. Again, just like Mr. Erby said, not everybody knows our rules. And if Mr. Aneos has something to say, I'd love to hear from him.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Aneos, if you could give us your name and address, you'll have three minutes.
Yeah, my name is Celso Aneos. I personally live at 4,004 McGregor Oaks. I own real estate in Mobile and Baldwin County. We manage about six hundred pieces of property through 251 Properties. We have, Skyline Realty is a listing company of real estate. And I, I'm sorry, I did not get to hear Jared talk all he did, but what he was saying, I'd like to reiterate all of that, what he, the little, the, when I did get finally in, I came a little late. But, you know, and if I understand this correctly, we're wanting to charge $25 per property? Is that what we're trying to do?
Twenty-five a property if you're less than, if you're ten or less, and it still goes with the same factor, gross receipts factor, if, if over ten.
It's already bad enough to manage and maintain what we have with what's going on with COVID and getting assessed an extra $25 per property when somebody owns a hundred pieces of property, that's going to be another $2,500 per, you know, per year. Now, if that goes toward something reasonable, that's going to help the properties down the road, yeah, I can see that. But, you know, the last thing we need is, is another tax situation that's going to cost us more money.
Now, my, my understanding, and we got Mr. Roberts on here, but, but my understanding is that we're not, that this, what's before us would not impose a $25 a year fee on those with ten or more.
Right.
No.
And all of them scream, they got more than ten.
Let's let revenue answer that question, because they're the ones that are going to be assessants.
Councilman Williams, this is Flo Kessler. I can answer that question, which is that the $25 per unit only applies to owners that have less than ten dwelling units. Anything more, then they pay according to the factor. And the factor is point zero zero two six five two percent of gross revenues. And there are all kinds of rules on how you develop, how you calculate gross revenues. But, is, so, for the, for the owners of ten or more units, those owners should be paying, purchasing a business license and paying that license fee right now. And I understand the comment that was made by Mr. Erby, that, that license is not, is not well-publicized. There are a lot of people who don't know that it, that it exists. And that is one of the fixes in this ordinance. It would put the license right into the city code, the schedule of licenses, so it will be more obvious for everyone to see. It has been in effect, but it was in some 1987 and 1988 ordinances that were not, that were not included in published city code.
Now, just, just for clarification, I think, Ms. Kessler, we're talking about a code that we're revising, I think, that, that started in 1965. There were two amendments in eighty-seven, one that made a change, one that took a change away, if I'm not mistaken. And then the same thing happened in eighty-eight. And what I'm hoping we don't do today is put something into effect that we're turning right around in the same year and, and changing. And that's why I hope that this discussion will lead to some revision of what we have. And, and Mr. Erby, I mean, I, I, I know that if I owned a hundred properties and I was accepting cash in return for, for occupancy, that, that I would have a reasonable expectation that there should be some taxation on that income. And I, I hope that I misunderstood you. But we are trying to make sure that everybody doing business in the City of Mobile is under the code, and not only their properties kept up, but they are good and responsible landowners, which I am certain with the people that I have talked to are. I, I have proposed something to simplify it. And I would like to, Mr. Davis, without Mr. Roberts.
Let's go ahead and see if we have any more public comment.
Can I say one thing?
No, sir.
Okay.
Do we have any other person?
Unless, are we going to follow under the rules of allowing council member to, to allow a minute extension on request by rule?
Sure, go ahead.
Mr. Aneos, you got one minute?
Yes. As far as those licenses, yes, that has been around. It is, and, and all of my entities are paying that. So, based on the collections on an annual basis. So, that is in, in effect. And all of our entities that we manage and maintain do have a license to operate based on real estate that you own. So, now, understanding that it is ten or less, those people would be the ones that suffer the consequences. And there are a lot of people under that, that situation. And I'm, I'm sure, you know, they would not like it, but if it improves the situation of the environment and the location, that would be a good thing. That's all.
Thank you. Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Richardson made a, a comment that I think was following Mr. Reynolds', and I want to go back and look at my notes here, said something about everybody should have a license. I don't think that that was what Mr. Reynolds was going to say before his time ran out. And I wondered if Mr. Reynolds would take an extra minute to, to address what he thinks about whether or not he thinks that everybody should have a business license.
Thank you, Mr. Williams, for the question. I, I certainly think everyone should, they, they should have a business license. Nobody should avoid paying the tax. The issue is, is that the current ordinance, I, I don't think explicitly says that every business must have a license per each location, each dwelling unit location. You know, I count it to sort of like a, a painter, you know? If, if you got a, a house that needs to be painted, say you got ten of them that needs to be painted, that painter doesn't have to buy a business license for your house. He has to buy a business license for his painting business. Now, he will have to pay based on the, the revenue he generated from your house, but it's, it's my contention that, you know, that's not required as court, the ordinance as written today doesn't require per location. It's where that business is conducted. And we, and it's my contention that business is conducted, not at that location.
I, I have a question here for, I guess, Flo. Flo, if, if I'm operating a business that has multiple locations, grocery stores or, or drugstores or convenience stores, do I have to have a separate business license for each of those locations?
Councilman Davis, yes, you do. And I would like to clarify that under the city code, that requirement is very clearly stated in Section 3446. It says, "Each place at which any business is carried on, a separate license shall be paid." And then it goes on to, to clarify that the license only authorizes the conduct of business at the, at that specific place. So, if you have two grocery stores, yes, each separate grocery store has its own business license.
So, in the same mind, a traveling nurse going from Providence Hospital to a hundred and fifty properties in a calendar quarter would have to have a license at all of those locations. Is, is that a correct statement? And if we do, let's get Providence Hospital on the line, because they are in gross violation.
Councilman Williams, no, I do not agree with that. It's what, the example you gave is more like the example that Councilman Richardson gave earlier, a, a guy who just goes to a corner and starts selling wa, bottles of water. He would have a peddler's license. So, the nature of that business is that it can be conducted, that it's a traveling business. And the business license code recognizes that certain businesses are traveling businesses, just, you know, but other businesses, like the rental of real property, those businesses are location-specific. You know, if you open up a grocery store, you've got a building, you've got a specific location, and, and your business license applies to that one location. But if you're a traveling nurse, then your business license allows you to conduct your profession, and your profession involves going to a lot of different locations. But it's you, the person who's licensed.
Okay, Mr. Chair, what I'm, I want to do is, if you don't mind, I want to go back to the very intent, and that was to capture all rental properties, who owned them, who managed them, where they're located, and ensure that each of them are in compliance with the code. In other, they're doing proper business, they're properly managed. But today, you have to have a business license if you have ten or less. And then you have to file an affidavit that lists every property and all the information pertaining to that property. And that is who, who owns it, who manages it, the, the physical location, the mailing location, a phone number. When I look at the new ordinance, I, I don't see something new in there other than a burden to complete an application for every single residence or dwelling place, dwelling unit, and then come back and renew them the next year. Because the, the same information is going to be shared. And, and I think it's more consolidated if we did an Excel spreadsheet, no matter how many properties you have. You file for one business license, and you say, "These are all the properties that fall under this license, and I am either going to file for gross receipts taxation or $25 taxation." It's simple. It is, it's sworn to when the guy or lady renews her license or applies for a business license. I, I mean, I, I'm, I'm just, I'm really trying to grasp, I'm not trying to fight the administration on this, but, but Mr. Erby, who is keeping up over a hundred properties, and Mr. Aneos more than that, wow, what a burden it would be to, every time they have to renew each year, they have to do a hundred renewals.
But they're not being asked to do that.
Oh, oh, yes, they are. Oh, yes, they are. It says, yes, they are. It says, "A license is required for each separate location." I'm reading from.
Ms. Kessler?
Yes?
If you own ten or more properties, under this ordinance that we're looking at today, if you own ten or more properties, are you required to get a separate business license for each of those properties?
Yes, you're required to get a separate business license everywhere you conduct business, just like any other business license. But let me say, a lot of the business licenses issued currently for residential rentals or apartment complexes, so, you know, it's, you, you don't get a separate license for each apartment unit. You get a license per address.
But, but currently, if you're like, like Mr. Erby, like Mr. Erby, if you got a hundred houses of separate addresses under current law, are you required to get a separate business license for each of those?
Yes, you would be if they're all separate locations.
Just, just as if you had a hundred drugstores.
Correct.
Or a hundred convenience stores.
Correct.
I don't know why you're arguing. I, I'm trying to make it simpler, and I.
I'm, I'm not arguing, we're just talking about it.
No, no, but it's, argue, argue, go back to your legal documents, sorry, legal books. Argument is a, is a position, that's all, not, not anger. But the, the fact is, we need to simplify this. It needs to be in one place. Right now, if you went and you Googled city code, rental properties, what you're going to end up with, more than likely, is the original ordinance. And that was written in 1965. If you Googled the right terminology, you might find the two amendments that happened in eighty-seven. And then you might get the two additional amendments that happened in eighty-eight. Maybe you only get one of the four, or three of the four. There needs to be a consolidated document, and it needs to be streamlined. And what I'm proposing in that email this morning to Mr. Roberts and yourself and, and, and Fred, is to simply streamline and treat everybody the same, have one license with a accompanying listing of all your properties, so that city revenue by, by ordinance or by state statute, I'm not sure, will know where your properties are and, and have the, the rights to do what the revenue department has by law.
But, Mr. Williams, if, if I could respond to that for a minute, please? What you've stated is exactly the purpose of, in part, is one of the purposes of the ordinance in front of you, because this ordinance would repeal all those other four ordinances and replace it with one listing in the city code, which, you know, that, several pages in Chapter thirty-four that, that has the schedule of all licenses. It would be listed as, as, under that schedule, so it'd be easy to find. Anybody wants to know what the license fee is for residential rentals, they would just go to the schedule of licenses, and it would be right there in the. And those all that, those all this other ordinance that you mentioned will all be repealed.
I did not see that in the ordinance as presented. Like, it usually has a whereas and therefore and all that. I did not see that we're going to repeal all of the previous and and go to a new. So that is good news. But to have a license. I guess, i- if anybody on this screen other than Mr. Nez and Mr. Reynolds and Mr. Erby, has any, uh, Mr. Stroke, sorry. Have anybody applied for a business license or multiple business license every year, year after year through the city website?
I personally haven't, but it comes in the mail for a renewal and then we do it via the renewal.
Yeah, it's a, if it's more, if it's a hundred and fifty business licenses, we have a chore. And and I still contend that one business license with an affidavit of updated, you can even say that that once a quarter or twice a year, they will update their listing of properties, the point of contacts, physical locations, mailing addresses, whatever the case is, however we want to set it up in this affidavit.
I hear what you're saying, but that's contrary to how we handle every other business that has multiple locations.
Yeah, but, Mr. Chair, drugstores don't generally come off the corners and and go into and refurbish our communities and ensure that there are people living in those communities and in good, safe houses. Mr. Erby, having over a hundred properties, many of my friends have fifty or more. And without them, if we make it too hard, one, they're either not going to comply, which is happening now. Because if everybody was complying right now with the affidavit, with the ten or less properties, we wouldn't have an issue. Because we already have kind of stated that we don't have really a problem with the people over ten. It's the people with ten or less because they won't report and we can't get a hold of them. So I'm just trying to make sense out of it. I'm going to rest for a minute, I gotta have some coffee.
I have a question, Joel.
Yes, Gina.
Mr. Nez, if you're still on the line, when you get your renewal in the mail, how is that handled? Are you having to go through every property you have and fill out separate paperwork now? Or how do you handle your your business license tax currently?
It's a renewal and we are paid it as it is due. We have three entities, but that's just my entities. But other people that we manage and maintain, I don't see where we're doing that for them. So I can't answer that question for for the other entities that we manage and maintain. But for my entities, yes, we do pay as they come up for renewal.
But it, is it property by property or is it just one umbrella?
One umbrella, one umbrella per entity.
Does anybody in town now do anything, you know, per location in rental markets, in the rental housing market?
Never been done before in my twenty years.
Is it licenses? I'm sorry, what?
Never been done in my twenty years of being in business.
Just a suggestion, as we are discussing. John was talking about the difference between rental housing and retail, like drugstores, grocery stores. If there is a way to separate retail from rental market, that might be a way to show a difference. Because like John said, they're not one hundred CBSs all around town. They're not one hundred Rite-Aids all around town, something like that. Whereas a lot of our people who were doing rentals do have that number of of properties. We might just look at that.
I have a question, if I may.
Ms. Ridge.
Thank you. And and John, I hear what you're saying about simplification because it would make more people compliant. And and I'm very interested in that. Right now, when someone has an entity, their business license is based on their revenue stream, the the formula, correct? Do I have that correct? Some, yes or no? Yes?
Yes, you do. That is.
The idea of looking at someone who had ten or less and doing twenty-five dollars a year for each one of those units, let's say they had four, so it's a hundred dollars. Would it be wiser to just put the formula in for everybody as opposed to separating it per units? Was that a thought that the administration looked at? Would that, would that make it easier for someone to pay their license fee and not have to go and and still have to tell you where these four units are located or four homes or whatever they own? It's, it seems to work with people who have multiple factors, multiple units. And so if if we're trying to get more information, would that be the wiser thing to do? Just keep the formula the same of, you know, whatever it generates is their license fee?
Mr. Chair, can I?
Let's answer.
I would like to hear that.
I want to add to that answer or question. If in my email this morning to the to the to the committee and to Mr. Roberts, I said, let's make it a choice. Let's not us decide what's best for a business owner. Let's let the business owner decide what's best for them and more convenient for them. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Well, the twenty-five dollars, I think, was probably the administration trying to look at what it costs their personnel to shuffle the paperwork, you know, so that they don't lose money, you know, organizing this. Most businesses, it's a revenue stream. You you enter a certain amount when you start your business, but then it's based on what you generate. So I'm just wondering whether that's something the administration thought about. And and were they just trying to be kind to people that had less than ten and and not overburden them with the cost to tell the city that they existed?
Ms. Rich?
Yes.
If I, if I can answer.
Sure.
Yes, or the original draft did not have that specific twenty-five dollars per unit for under ten. And and that amount was added as a convenience to the taxpayers, to the business owners, so that so that they wouldn't have to go through the trouble of calculating their gross receipts, then applying the factor and, you know, and doing all that. And the twenty-five dollar fee was selected as as a minimal fee. The the object of the licensing is to make sure that the city knows which properties are being rented and knows who's in the business of renting residential property. So it's, so, you know, the twenty-five dollar fee is not set in stone if the council thinks that that fee is too high. But but there was a robust discussion and the decision was it would be easier for people to just pay a set, a set fee.
No, I I understand that, but I also understand what Councilman Williams is saying about, do we ju- I mean, you give people a choice, they're going to pick the twenty-five dollars a unit, I I would think. But I'm not sure we want to give a choice because we don't give businesses a choice. We base it on a formula. So it's coming up with the right formula to to, you know, track these owners and to make sure that they're, you know, are good landlords, so to speak. But thanks, I appreciate that information.
If I could add to that, the the additional reasons for doing this is so that the the code enforcement team can assist revenue when they're doing the research to identify properties that aren't compliant. And in the worst case, no, of a license revocation process, that'll allow something to be revoked. If you have an affidavit system, there's nothing there to be revoked to close the business.
Mr. Chair.
Wait, wait, just a minute, Mr. Richard.
I'm here.
Mr. Roberts, one of the questions I've had is as far as identifying if there's if there's a piece of rental property that is not being maintained, the city can find out loans if I go into the tax records. And so this is, this is unnecessary because the city can go to tax records. What I just heard you say is that, is that if we require the owners to have a business license, then that gives us a better means of enforcement than we might if there was no business license. Is that correct?
That's, that's correct. And and the the tax revenue information's not always up to date, they're hardly ever up to date, actually. The business license process would allow to get at least the annual update for who's responsible for the property on the maintenance side.
Yeah.
So, Richardson.
That's a, Mr. Chairman. Seems to me that a lot of the confusion is coming from this language that, to me, doesn't make much sense. If we go back to four twelve to to the very, very beginning of the, where it said title, fifty-three, one-one-one-oh, four-twelve. It says, "All owners of real property who engage in renting or leasing of ten or more dwelling units."
Less than ten, less than ten. Less than ten.
No, you may be in the wrong one there.
No, no, I'm talking about more than, less than ten is the next one.
Oh, I see, okay, okay.
This is in ten-four-twelve, not eleven-four.
Look at the very top up there.
Yeah, I see it, I see it, I'm sorry.
If you read down to the period, they would not have told us nothing. Read down to the period and tell me what 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 did they tell us?
Nothing.
Absolutely not.
And say anything, it's just.
It's just a lot of words, they didn't tell us nothing about what we're going to do to those people with more than ten. It's rang around the roses.
Yeah, there's missing, well, it looks like, Flo, it looks like there's some something missing there.
Yeah.
It's missing. It didn't tell us what what they were going to, now, in the next one, they told us what they're going to do to them with with less than ten. But more than ten, they just carried us around in seconds like the chitter of years for forty years going around the mountain. They just rang the mountain with us and then seen that.
Councilman, Councilman Richardson, this is Flo. So remember, this is fitting into the schedule of licenses, which is in the existing chapter thirty-four. So for these guys that who have the, who rent out ten or more dwelling units, if you look over in the right column, it says the license rate is point zero-zero-two-six-five-two. And that, that's just like all, many, many other listings in that schedule of licenses. So so it's not apparent, maybe from just looking at this one ordinance, but if you, if you could plug it into chapter thirty-four, you you would see from the introductory language that there's a whole discussion of gross receipts and it explains what what goes into gross receipts. It explains which gross receipts you use to calculate business rate. So that when you get to the schedule, all the schedule actually has to show is what the lot, the revenue department calls the factor. And that's that point zero-zero-two-six-five-two.
Flo, Flo.
Yes, sir.
If you, if you read the first sentence, tell us what they're, tell us what they're trying to say.
Hey, Fred, it's just all it's doing is this, they're identifying the people that have to pay the tax. In other words, all owners of ten or more have to pay the the rate. And if you go down and and it's all of less, they're just, they're just identifying in the in the schedule whose, what rate is applicable to who.
But Joe, it's an incomplete thought. A sentence is a complete thought. This is an incomplete thought. And then when they went down there to less than ten, they made sure they went over there and said twenty-five dollars for dwelling. But above, when they said above, they put absolutely nothing.
No, that rate's up there.
Rate's up there, Fred, on the right, license rate.
Uh, uh, not not for more than ten.
Yeah, more than ten, it's the zero-point-zero-zero-two-six-seven-two.
Five-two.
Okay, okay, all right, I take that.
Hey, look, look, it it seems like to me, just from listening,
clear.
That that there's general, excuse me, there's general agreement that people who operate businesses in the city of Lobeville ought to get a business license.
Right.
But 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 maybe, excuse me, maybe in the case of these people who operate rental properties, that it might not be necessary, excuse me, I got a frog in my throat. It might not be necessary for them to get a separate license for each particular location. I'm not convinced of that myself, but that ar- but that argument's been made and I'm open to thinking about. Is that, are those two statements correct?
Yes.
John proposes a motion to that, Joel.
I know. I think, and I think John's solution's a good solution if the if the council feels that it's proper in this ca- in the case of people owning rental properties to not require a separate license for each property.
But list them all on the schedule.
But list them all on the schedule, right.
And that's what John proposed.
And they would, and they would still be responsible for the license rate for like the the receipt, the revenues.
Yes.
But what do what do we do then for the under tens? Are we going to put them on the formula?
No, I I'd let them stay on the twenty-five, which I imagine is going to be cheaper for them.
Right, could be.
And 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 also less complicated than filing the gross receipts.
Definitely, definitely there because there's so many calculations that Ms. Kessler alluded to. What's what counts against your gross receipts and what doesn't. And in most cases, you have to have an accountant or a guy with three properties that he inherited from his family. We don't have to pay twenty-five per, have one license, have all the list, his phone number there, all done. And he's simply finished.
Yeah, okay.
You know, we'd have to make sure that we gave some guidance on exactly what the the spreadsheet or whatever looks like and what all it contains so that everybody had the same, you know, the same document. You know, they would have to create that.
That goes back to the administration who's who's instigated this. And they ought to, we ought not be dreaming up stuff on the council, even though it's ours. To do what we want to with it, I think we ought to.
I think, I think Ms. Kessler had a comment.
Yeah, right.
If I could say something, please. I hear what you're saying about the application process and and we're happy to look at a consolidated form that would make things easy. I, you know, I hesitate to disrupt the the policy that's been in place forever and ever with the city that every, every location has its own business and its own business license. And one of the reasons is this, suppose you have an owner who has ten properties, nine, or let's say nine properties, eight properties are wonderful, one property is in terrible condition. And and it just, for whatever reason, that particular owner just won't bring that one property up to code. It seems to me that the council is going to want the option to revoke the business license for that one property that's not up to code without touching the licenses for those other eight properties, which are all fine and good. So if if the paperwork is the issue, I think that perhaps I can work with the revenue department and see if we can address address the application form and still keep the basic concept of each, each location has its own license.
Can you bring that back to us? Because they can't work it out today.
No, they can't work that.
But but also, Mr. Days, we have revoked, since I've been on the council, one rental property license. And it got, it got appealed, I think, and overturned in court, I'm not sure of that last comment. So are we, are we fixing something that that's maybe not an issue?
Well, all I know is that, as I've said before, when I went, when I, on vacations, I've gone door to door in my district. I've seen a lot of rental houses in poor repair, a lot. And 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 they are destroying neighborhoods and.
Yes, yeah.
And and I think, I think we need to, if we, we need to take some action, it needs to be fair and balanced. But and we needs to be towards giving the city the ability to more closely affect the condition of these properties. I'm I'm open to how we do that, why don't we, why don't we do this? Why don't we let Ms. Kessler and Mr. Roberts go back to the drawing board and and see what? uh, Ms. Kessler and Mr. Roberts go back to the drawing board and, and see what they can, uh, come up with in terms of making the application process, uh, more, more streamlined and easier.
Thank you for that.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Yeah, I do agree with the statement that you just made, um, about the rental properties because I have several rental properties in my district and I'm, you know, I head over to my mom's, which live in district one. And the same thing, they didn't disrepair. But we haven't eaten up, you know, um, you know, uh, ordinance, uh, laws that's on the books where the city is not enforcing it, where, you know, for instance, you know, trash outside of the, uh, rental houses, um, that his council had, you know, passed about a couple of years ago, that just allowed the city to go and ticket the, uh, owner of that particular, um, house or that rental property and we not doing it. I mean, we could put all the laws on the books, but if there's no enforcement, I mean.
Now, the, the prob- the problem with, the problem with the tickets is it goes to municipal court and then municipal court has to obtain, Flo, you can help me with this, but, but has to obtain jurisdiction over.
Exactly right.
The, the person who owns it, which is, which is always terribly difficult. They don't show, there's nothing municipal court can do about it, which, which, which makes that particular mode of enforcement very time consuming and often leads nowhere. And so what, what they're trying to do here is give us, give us the hammer we can use to make a difference. Was I correct in that, Flo?
Yes, uh, Councilman Dave, that was, that was a good description and that, and, and as she said, that's particularly vexing with, uh, litter violations because you don't see who drops the litter. A, a policeman can only issue the ticket if it happens in his or her presence. And, um, and then it is a process to serve the warrant and get the person to come to court. So yes, that was a good description.
Yeah, we do know owns them and the city just don't enforce them. I mean, I can give you a list of properties now. Uh, you can go to right now, there are trash out there and clearly you know who's the owner, but there's no enforcement at all.
Yeah, but, but that's again, because when we issue the ticket, the owner has to show up in court.
Yeah.
And the owners, the owners don't show up in court.
It's not gonna change because we changed the law. They're, they're simply not gonna apply for a license.
It, that's gonna happen to John and still, again, the city's not going out there doing what they're supposed to do.
Compliance is compliance, yep.
But we also, a lot of renters in these neighborhoods who create the trash and they refuse to clean up their yards. So then we have to, that's why we have to try to cite the owners. And we can go out and put notices on doors and write up tickets and stuff. But like Joel said, you, you've got to get them in court and that seems to take forever. I have a lot of instances like that too. You know, if we could get the renters to take care of their own properties and get the litter out of their yards, that would help. But a lot of times they don't, so we have to have a way to go after somebody to get the properties cleaned up. And, and I wish it was easier, you know, I wish it was much easier to get the owners in court or just to get the owners to take care of their properties, period. You know, we might not be having some of these discussions.
The current, current law requires.
We can either sit here and do nothing with a system that we know end working or try to take action to, uh, give us a, a better tool to, to work it. I don't know whether it's gonna work or not, but I know what's not working, which is what we have right now.
I, I will tell you what, what I propose will work. It, it will work. What I sent in the email will work. And I wish we'd go to, at least get to that point, uh, Mr. Robertson, Ms. Kessler. Uh, it will work. It, it's still gonna have some problems, but, but we, uh, we're not gonna clean up the city with an, with an ordinance. And so we don't, let's not get it confused. We just need to stay focused on what the purpose is. And if it is to be able to contact an owner, uh, then let's make it easy for the owner to tell us what properties they have.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Richardson.
The best the council can do if they gi- is to give the administration the tools it needs to run the city. Uh, the council can't clean anything up because we don't have no authority to do it. What the council can do is give the tools to the administration for the administration to carry out its responsibility. If there's no law against it, the city can't do nothing about it. I don't care how bad it looks, who is doing it, if no law is against it, the city can't do nothing. If the city is not enforcing the law, it's not the council's responsibility. We can't make the administration enforce any law. I can tell you one thing, almost every, every day I see where some young person, uh, been arrested for marijuana. And they gonna carry that, they gonna carry that record for the rest of their life. It's gonna, uh, it's gonna fake them and trying to get a job. But it's back to what CJ say, some of this other stuff that's in their face. I don't see where nothing is happening. Otherwise, they put focus on what they want to put focus on. There's nothing we can do about that. But give them the tools, do what we believe they ought to be doing. And this is what we are trying to do today, is give them the tools to keep up with rental property. So if, if necessary, to impose them sort of fine on them, we know who it is, where it is, the whole thing. Give, give them the tools.
Mr. Chairman, one more comment. We, we've been given tools for the last, now, ten years. Um, and, um, and we, we, we are about to attempt again to put into different words, uh, a burdensome system, uh, that'll accomplish no more than what the current law has. Ms. Kessler has, has given us her opinion and our attorney has not, uh, differed in that opinion in that it's already required that they tell us where their properties are. If they're ten or less, they have to do it in an affidavit, uh, asking for an exemption. And in, in, in a ten or over ten, more than ten, then they are supposed to file a license for every single property. In neither case do, does anyone in the administration, any of us, think that that's happening now. And what we have to ask ourselves is how can we write a law that'll be clear to everyone what is, what is, what is necessary and required of every business owner? Um, and I propose to you that the email I sent this morning, that I did not write on my own. I took the advice of many of my friends who have more than ten properties. Uh, we'll simplify the process and give us a chance in knowing who owns the property and who to call, when we need to contact.
I ain't got nothing to get, but you wrote, John.
Thank you.
Uh, uh, Mr. Roberts was, uh, that, that email was directed to Mr. Roberts. So, Mr. Roberts, you can share that with, uh, Kessler. And, um, the sense of the committee seems to be, uh, asking y'all to go back and figure out a way to streamline the, uh, the registration process. Anything else for the committee today?
No, not this time, man.
What you did, John.
Uh, not, if not, I'll hear a motion to adjourn.
Now, Fred, you-